Alright guys, I have six. Is that number one? Alright, let's uh call the auditor. Roll call. McKnight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kinder?
Here.
Lights?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, great. Um, do we have anybody for public comment?
No, your honor.
Um, notice of executive session meetings. Uh, no executive session meeting was held after the last. Um, uh, crew of minutes, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. Can I motion?
Motion.
Second. Uh, discussion. Vogel. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder? Aye. Um, communication. No communication was received. Uh, managers report, Mary.
Thank you. So tonight, we have John McShane uh here to do a presentation on refinancing of the pension bonds. This is just an informational um presentation for council.
Good evening. Uh, what are the chances that uh anyone has the handout that was sent via email?
Everyone should have it.
Oh, great. I brought a couple coffees. If you don't have it, I do have a couple coffees. It looks like we've got, you know, a nice contingent of new members to city council, so just briefly, my involvement with the city has been going back to two thousand and six. We've been helping them pave their way through the financial markets since then, involving many capital projects, funding, refunding, saving tons of money for the city, and getting the rating or the credit, just like you have your own credit upgraded during that same time period to a position where now you're one in a position of an A rating, which is two steps higher than you were when we started. So the city's in good financial condition. We're always on the lookout for ways to potentially save the city money by lowering your interest costs, just like your mortgage, if you do the mortgage. And debt is, that's a lot what we're gonna talk about tonight. It's a little bit different than a typical refinancing, but for all aspects, it ends up to the same conclusion where you're gonna save money potentially by doing uh this potential traction we're gonna discuss tonight. So, a mortgage for your house, you've got to get a payment that you make on a monthly basis. Here, you owe the pension fund an annual contribution so that the retirees, the current members, when they retire, there's enough money in that account in order to pay off them on a, on a yearly basis for their, you know, for their pension payment. Over time, you, you place money in this account, it earns interest. However, it has to earn enough interest so that the amount deposited versus the amount that's gonna be taken out is gonna be equal. Well, just like every pension fund, not just the city of Mebo, like, you know, the city of Pittsburgh, all throughout the state, the Commonwealth in the U.S., over time, the assumptions that were made were very high. In your case, they're anywhere from seven and a half to almost eight percent that you have to earn in order for the account to be fully funded. So what most municipalities have found out is that because the assumption rate versus the very conservative investments you're purchasing are different, that it was impossible to earn that seven and a half to eight percent. So what happens is beyond your typical deposit, you actually owe a second deposit with your MMO payment to make up any shortfall that would be in that account. And the way they do that is on a biannual basis. You get a report, it tells you you have X dollars available, however that you, but you needed Y. So the difference between those two numbers is called your unfunded actual accrued liability. And that is the amount that they then take and say, okay, city of Mebo, we don't expect you to pay this tomorrow. But what we do want you to do is pay it over a period of time. So they create this report biannually, it says, okay, based on these biannual reports, you owe us so much, you owe the pension fund, your own account, so much over a twelve to fifteen year period. So the first couple pages of this presentation are just gonna walk through how those accounts are set up and what you owe the pension funds. So there's three funds available, there's the police, the fire, and the city employees. On page one, that actuarial accrued liability, that number we talked about that they come up with biannually, what its shortfall is, is highlighted in yellow. So that, well, the full liability is above it, forty-five point nine. You have an asset value, money that's already sitting there, of thirty-eight, and the differential is the unfunded accrued liability in that case, which is seven point seven million. So then they take that seven point seven million, say, okay, you have to pay us, you have to pay the fund at a rate of seven and a half, or seven and a quarter to seven and a half percent over the next eleven years in order for that account to be made whole. You say, okay, well, what's that look like? And that's on page two. So based upon your last, last unfunded annual or your best, your last uh report from, from your pension fund, the cash flows look like what's highlighted in yellow on page two. So in two thousand and twenty-two, when you add up all those funds, you owe one point one million. And you can see that starts to decline to one point, one point sixty-three thousand twenty-five, all the way down to, by two thousand and thirty-three, you're gonna be, you have the fully funded account if nothing changes. Cause this is all based upon one period of time, one day in time, which we know, you know, as soon as this report was published, it either got better or worse. But this is as of two thousand and twenty-one. So my goal as your investment bankers is to say, based upon current funding conditions, is there a better way to do this that would benefit the city? And that's what we're gonna talk about. So in this case, the city in the past in two thousand and five and two thousand and ten took advantage of low interest rates, took at that time their unfunded liability, funded it in probably two thousand and five, they probably funded it at over five percent. So their cost of funds was five percent as compared to seven and a half. In two thousand and ten, it was probably closer to four. So what we're talking about today is the opportunity to do it at a rate, uh, if you turn to page three. At a rate just under two and a half percent. So what we're gonna look at is, is there a better way to pay for those cash flows using bonds over the same period of time? So only gonna have to do that, not changing anything, just lowering your funding cost, and does that make sense? So page three, look at, in this case, you're currently funding at seven and a half percent. You issue bonds. Bonds are a little bit different than a mortgage because the reason most municipalities go to the bond market versus a bank is because you get the advantage of breaking apart your amortization schedule, selling it to many different buyers. So the person that buys the one-year amortization receives a lower rate of return than the person that buys that final piece of amortization. So the rates, if you went to the bond market, would range from one point four to two point eight percent. That's not a variable rate, it's just that each maturity is sold at a different rate. The shorter maturity, like a CD, if you went to the bank and bought a CD, that CD is gonna have a lower return than the person that bought the ten-year maturity. And bonds are sold the same way. So you, as the bond issuer, get the advantage of paying those low rates. So the short-term rate's one point four, that two thousand and thirty-three rate is two point eight. What you really care about is what's the average, what you're paying, what's your average payment? And it's about two point four seven based upon today's market. So now you can see the math. We looked at what you're currently required to fund it at, seven and a half, versus what you could fund it at. The difference between those without changing anything would be your savings. So in that graph at the bottom, what that graph does is it leaves that same payment stream in place, just funds it at a lower level. And what that does, that lower interest rate on the right-hand side, you can see the actual dollar differential will save you roughly over that next ten years. Almost a million dollars, nine hundred thousand, using today's rates. Now, today's rates are higher than December rates, so there would have been more savings. And quite frankly, we know you're not ready to do this today, and prayer bond issue still takes about a month. So whatever you decide to do would be based upon the time that you issued the bonds. So rates could be higher, rates could be lower. This is as of today. Just like your unfunded actual liability changes the next day, so do bonds. You don't lock in the actual rate until you go to the bond market that day. And then whatever interest rates were that day, that's what you locked in. Now, we monitor that on your behalf, keep you informed. And we also set limits so that if the bond market were to spike and it didn't make sense anymore, we don't go to the market if it doesn't make sense. So we would say, you need to save X dollars in order to move forward, or else you do not move forward. But based upon this analysis, if you left everything the same and just lower your interest rate, you save the city's general fund, cause this comes, all comes from the general fund, nine hundred thousand over the next ten years. That's a, that's a total savings. It's not, that's not every year, total savings. Your administration also asked us to look at, well, okay, that leaves everything the same. And that leaves that payment stream where you're paying that high dollar price today, one point one million, and it starts to decline. What if we came up with a, a level payment? How's that look? And that's on page four. Page four does change the payment stream, leaves it over the same time, but now makes the same payment. So instead of paying one point one million this year, if you go to the right-hand side, you see this taxable bond payment column. Instead of paying one point one, you're gonna now pay roughly seven eighty thousand over the next ten years. So what that does is it gives you a set dollar amount for the budget that never changes. And now you always know that budget. If you get some gains in, in, on the unfunded actual liability side, it could come up with some savings. Um, and it gives you more money to flow back today to the general fund as opposed to the page prior where we basically just spread it over the life of the issue. The pluses and minuses, doing this helps today's budget, but it also hurts tomorrow's because you were due, you were due to decline in your payment structure. On this one, you get the benefit today, but the payment remains the same for the next ten years. As opposed to the structure prior where after about four years, you start to see some very big declines. What's the right way to go? There is no right way to go. What fits your current situation, what fits your budget over the next five years, um, and it's, in, in, in your, your, your process as a city council, and what you think you wanna do. So, you know, everyone always looks at us and says, what's the right way? There is no right way. Both are great ways to fund it, just what fits your budget. That's probably a lot of information on bonds and pension funds. You know, if you wanna sit back and think about a couple questions or why this might make sense, we'd be glad to answer any, any detail you have at this time.
I have a few questions. John, you and Tim and I spoke last week, and so just for the record, the, uh, if we become fully funded, it's my understanding, and our actuary said the same thing, that this does not impair our state aid contribution.
According, according to your actuary, yes.
Okay.
That's his specialty, huh?
And the pension, borrowing for pension is taxable.
Correct.
So the rate is slightly higher than we might otherwise expect. And finally, the pension borrowing does not impair our ability to borrow for other capital needs. I think you and I talked about that.
So, um, and I think this is an important point because for borrowing perspective, the city does have limits on how much you can borrow in total based upon your budget. When you issue pension bonds, you get a credit off of that for the amount of bonds issued. So in this case, if it takes seven point five million to fully fund your pension, that seven point five million immediately comes off of the debt you have outstanding for state purposes. Um, it's one of the few exceptions there are. The others, if it was, and the reason why is because they consider it self-liquidating because the money's coming in. So it wouldn't affect your, any capital projects that you might have in the future.
Currently, we're just funding our pension just by paying in to the top, right? We don't have funds out to fund that.
You're, you're almost like, you're, you're almost like your, you're almost your own borrower. So you owe,
Sure.
You owe yourself money, and you set up your own account and say, okay, I'm gonna pay myself back at seven, I'm required. You have documents with your union that you require yourself to fund that at a rate of seven and a quarter to seven and a half percent, depending on which stream it is. So it's almost a loan against the pension fund that you have with yourself. It's how real that you should look at it.
This, this isn't a refinancing, this is an issue with,
It's a liability. Yeah.
Basically, what we would be doing if we don't have a bond issue is we, the taxpayers would be paying seven and a half percent into the fund. If we borrow, the taxpayers are paying the two point four seven percent interest. The money is invested in the market, and I think, not that the past is prologue to the future, but I think that our return last year was somewhere between twelve and twenty percent annualized. Um, yeah, since July twenty twenty, annualized at like nineteen point seven one percent. So you'd be borrowing in that case at two and a half percent and getting almost twenty percent. So the taxpayers are not functioning as the lender in that, in that particular situation. Now, the market could have downturns, which would alter the, the accrued liability. But depending on when the market would recover and when the funds were issued, uh, you could be like you were in twenty twenty. You lost a lot of money in the first three months, and then the stock market came roaring back a few months later, and stuff that you sold for a dollar, you were able to sell later on, if you bought it back for a dollar, uh, for a dollar sixty or a dollar seventy, which would really strengthen the fund. And uh, I know Tim would be disappointed if I didn't mention it. This also addresses something called intergenerational equity.
Can you explain it, Tim?
I'll explain it, I'll explain it. Okay. I'll explain it by an example of what is not intergenerational equity. My grandson is paying taxes right now to support the retirement of my teachers. In other words, a generation is supporting four generations of retirees. And when you have an underfunded pension, that's essentially what's happening. Tomorrow's people who didn't benefit from the services today of, of our employees have to pay the freight. Uh, if you get a fully funded pension, that over time reduces the intergenerational, uh, the lack of intergenerational equity. And we have been, uh, the pension committees have been more aggressive, and they have sought a better return than they did, what, two years ago, I think, Tim? When we changed pension providers. I think, yeah, you were both on council when we agreed to change pension, pension advisors there. So I would support this. Uh, you folks may need to talk about it and study it some more, but I think it's a sound concept, it's an equitable concept.
The one that we decided to, to recommend to you guys would be on page three. Uh, we feel the savings is obviously better, but there's a savings because we're paying a higher pension bond back. But we feel it's, it's better, uh, the way Jim said, in the future. Uh, we could take all the savings today, and then that's it, you know? There's no more savings, I have to use it all in one year. So I am kinda anxious to see that maybe we'd have savings every year for the next ten years. So we're probably recommending, uh, page three.
Can you say page three? To me, that says the matched funding.
Yes, yes, yes. Changing nothing, just lowering your interest.
Just saying, same thing we would have paid anyhow, we have to pay it, it's just we're gonna pay bond instead of that.
We don't see the savings now, but we see the savings.
Well, you get about seventy thousand, give or take seventy thousand dollars a year, every year. Whereas with the other one, you might have a four hundred thousand dollar savings the first year, but by the end, you have an extra four hundred thousand you're paying. So you're just back-end loading it.
So if you think about page, here's what I like personally. I like page three because it gets you, if, if you're already budgeting page three, you have some nice declines in your pension payments currently scheduled. So after about five years, you start to see some very nice declines in what you have to budget annually. So let's leave that in place and just lower your interest costs. And now, moving forward to the council, you know, you have some built-in savings accounts moving forward that are gonna help the budget in, you know, years twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight as you start to see some declines in your unfunded account, actual liability.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't wanna do this? I'm just like,
The only downside that somebody come up at one time is if I deposit the seven point five million and tomorrow I lose it all. Okay? That's about the only downside I can think of, but I would hope that our pension advisors know what to, to invest it in. Right now, the pension fund has a sixty percent in equities or stocks and forty percent in fixed income or bonds, so that's the, the ratio that we have it in. So I would hope that, that once they know that they were getting this deposit, that they would be appropriately putting it in the places they need to. But no, there's really, Jim, I think we talked about this extensively, there's not a big downside at all. If we're afraid to lose money, we should never make a deposit into another pension fund again, so. That's kinda where you're at.
Do you have any more questions? I just, you said the, um, you said it takes about, it takes a month to,
Sure, I'll get through that, if you'll be get through it, so.
Yeah, just in terms of timeline.
So, so we're gonna move as quick as possible. The, the, the largest hurdle is putting the rating in place. So even though that every deal we've done, we've done, probably do one deal a year for the past ten years, every transaction has to go through a new rating process with standard reporters. They relook at your books, that process can take upwards of three weeks. Not because it's a, a three-week look at the city, it's really because of how busy they are with multiple entities throughout the U.S. doing the same thing that you guys are doing, whether with your pension bonds or your outstanding debt. So because they're so busy, we get put into their timeline. And as soon as we get that rating back, in the meantime, we start preparation of every document that we need to issue the bonds, which we can do within a three-week period. So that, once we get the rating, whenever it does come, we're ready to go. Now, the critical piece from your standpoint is, you need to pass an ordinance, it's called a not-to-exceed ordinance. That ordinance can be done at either a special meeting or it can be done in your next meeting in February, which I'm not really sure when it is. But we look at that timeline, and if it fit when standard reporters were gonna come back with the rating, we would do it at your next meeting. If for some reason standard reporters said, oh, you know what, John? We can get your rating within two weeks, and you wanna do this? Then we probably would ask for a special meeting so that we can move faster. Because what we do now is, and we don't like to predict where interest rates are going, all we can tell you is the direction they are currently heading. The next Fed meeting's in mid-March. So if you wanted to do this, it's your decision, but my recommendation would be to try and to get everything in place prior to that next Fed meeting. And the bond market, just like the stock market, where everyone's always trying to maneuver to see what the Fed's gonna do. So that, we already know that no matter what they do, that, that first increase is already baked into the pie. These numbers probably already have that first increase. We're not worried about that. What we're worried about is what they might say at that meeting for the next increase. So we're not really thinking about the increase of parts, we're thinking, are they gonna surprise us and say there's another four increases coming this year? So any transactions currently being contemplated, we're trying to get into the market prior to that next Fed meeting. So those are things we're doing, that we're looking at, if you're interested in, moving forward with this.
If we had the happy circumstance the last time we borrowed, or like the last time we borrowed, where we actually had excess cash. Uh, I mean, the, the market was so receptive that we generated a little bit of excess cash. Is there any problem, or is there any requirement? I'm assuming that it's required to put it into the pension fund. Uh, or do I credit it?
So it's a little bit, the answer is it's a little bit different when you're dealing with pension bonds because we're only gonna be permitted to borrow the amount in that ordinance that says to fully fund the unfunded actual liability. If you, if rates were lower, and we were able to raise more cash, you could do that, but we have to identify what we're borrowing that money for.
Okay.
So in this case, unless you tell us differently, we just borrow the amount that's going to be deposited into the pension fund.
Okay, good.
And if rates are lower, you just save more over time. You don't save nine hundred thousand, you save a million, or you save one point two million. That's where you see that excess savings if rates were to get lower.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, the only thing, if you guys thought, it sounds like you're saying the sooner the better to do this? I just, is there another time frame we need to look at? Like, how they're like, oh, except for, I don't know.
I think what I laid out with is, if you wanted to move as fast as possible, that's as fast as you could move.
Yeah, okay.
You can move slower, for sure. You don't have to move as fast as possible. But the question was, how quickly can you get this done? That's the fastest it can be completed.
Yeah, okay.
But you don't have to move to that timeline, you can always move slower.
We would probably recommend that the next meeting would be sufficient to have Pat, uh,
Sure.
draft the bond ordinance.
Okay.
Do you see a reason to have,
I don't know what the date of the next meeting is.
Two weeks.
Sixteen.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's two weeks. And we won't, we would, we would never be ready in two weeks.
I don't think S and P would be ready.
No, but, um, that way you don't have to have a special meeting for the, the next time after that, so. Sure.
Okay.
So does council want them to move forward with drafting the, uh, not-to-exceed ordinance? Or do you wanna think about it?
I'm in favor of the not-to-exceed or myself.
I support this.
Yes, so yeah, I wanna think about it, but I'm in the minority, so that's fine.
And just keep in mind, these types of ordinances are just one rating, they're passed on one rating.
Yeah, that's fine.
So bond, bond counsel, Pat Healy will draft this, um, and you could pass it in two weeks with one vote. Is what, Mary, it's indicating? Okay.
Okay, so we could pass it with one vote or not?
It, or not.
Right, so that would be the vote.
It'll be presented ahead of time, it'll be in your packets. Um, they'll be here, uh, John and Pat will be here to answer your questions at the next meeting. And then you can decide how you feel about it in the meantime.
Okay. I mean, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, and if you did have any questions between now and then, please feel free to contact me.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you, John, for, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks. Yep.
Old business?
There is a letter resignation for the Market Authority. Uh, Jennifer Thurman is resigning her post as, at the end of the semester. She will be seeking, um, a new job and relocating, and does not want to impact, um, the Market Authority by remaining on. Um, so if council wishes to accept that resignation, that leaves a vacancy on the Market Authority for a term that expires January first, twenty twenty-six.
There, I'm sorry, there was like a pool of, of folks, right, Jim? You and Sean were part of that? And I, I wonder if we can just,
There was at least two or three other members.
Turn back to some of the folks that they,
We can ask them if they're still interested, but the appointment policy says we still have to re-advertise. So, uh, typically in the past, council has indicated two members to serve along with two members from the Market Authority on interview panel, so. Uh, but I would ask for a motion to accept, um, Thurman's resignation.
Motion. Second.
Hi, discussion? Vogel.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye, for good.
Kinder?
Aye.
Um, and then if council wishes that there's two members that wish to, to undertake that interview, um, I already spoke with Devon Stout, the Chair of the Market Authority this morning. Um, so they're ready to move forward with, with seeking candidates.
Oh, I, I also. If that's okay, anybody else wanna? Sorry. New business, Mary?
Thank you. So, uh, the first one is council subcommittees. Council last meeting was presented with a list of priorities. Based upon those priorities, staff has made a recommendation of three different subcommittees to be formed. A finance subcommittee, a housing and economic development subcommittee, and a community engagement subcommittee. Um, tonight, we would ask council if they so choose to appoint members to those subcommittees. Just as a reminder, two members of council. Just as a reminder, two members of council may be appointed to the subcommittees.
So, I think that we could probably figure out which subcommittees we'd like to be on and then, correct? Do you want to go through the committees or like through...
Yeah, well, let's start with the finance subcommittee. Who would like to, we all looked at...
I would be interested.
Okay, I would also be interested. Okay. Okay, and then, I mean, I think that that's great, does anybody else want to be on that? Let's move to housing and economic development subcommittee.
I'd like to be on that.
I also would like to be on that. Anyone else? We can only have two?
Just two. You could potentially have an alternate in case one was not available.
I would be the alternate if you want to, if you're interested.
I will, well, why don't I be the alternate and then serve on the community engagement subcommittee, delegate work. Okay, a community engagement and subcommittee, hold foot bottom. And then who else would like to be on that?
I'll, I'll take that as like, I want to be in all...
Well, and I'll be an alternate or be the second?
Yeah, let's do that, that sounds great.
Okay. All right, I think we, we think that's done pretty good. Discussion and resolution, Big Heart Pet Brands subdivision 2021.
Resolution of the council of the city is need though for the approval of the Big Heart Pet Brands Incorporated subdivision 2021 dash one. Resolved by the council of the city of Needville that whereas in accordance with the provisions of section 1359.02 of article 1359, the land subdivision regulations of the Needville Municipal Code, the final plat for Big Heart Pet Brands Incorporated subdivision 2021 dash one, minor subdivision submitted to the city as prepared by Allegheny Professional Services LLC, registered surveyor, being a portion of assessment parcel numbers 3700-065-5, 3700-065-2, and 3700-065-3, is hereby one, approved, and two, approved for recording. No public improvements guarantee is required because there are no public improvements planned or required by the said land subdivision regulations.
So move.
Right on. Discussion?
We'll turn this over to Gary Johnson.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Gary.
Thanks. All right, so this is in Bitwood. Everyone's familiar with Race Street, how it kind of goes on and then it kind of just stops. There's a gas station on the right as you're driving out Race Street. This is proposed to be a nearly five-acre subdivision. If you go past that, the gas station on the right, it'll turn kind of more into grass, it's really tough to get down the rest of the Race Street. It's back in there. It's abutted by Cusawaga, Cusawaga Creek on the left, Asbury Manor, Mobile Home Park on the north, or the top of your, of your map there, by actually Vernon Township, a section of Vernon Township that juts into there on the, on the right of the east, and then Race Street, of course, to the south or to the bottom. It's an oddly shaped parcel, it's intended to be used for recreational, public recreational purposes. This is Kevin Bozel with French Creek Valley Conservancy, he is the land dude. He kind of shepherds these things through. It's basically a sale from Big Heart Pet Brands, which is, I believe, a subsidiary or affiliate of Smuckers, which used, of course, be, Ainsworth is now part of Smuckers. It's property that they purchased that actually fronts on Rogers Ferry Road, on the old Spalding Building, if that means anything to anybody, next to the bus service on Race Street or on Rogers Ferry. So this parcel actually goes all the way up there. It also abuts the old railroad right away to the east, you'll see that on there as well. It meets all the requirements of the subdivision land development ordinance, the city planning commission is reviewed and recommended approval, county planning commission is reviewed and recommended for approval. There are a few tweaks made to it from the initial application that are now on there. Otherwise, it meets all the requirements and it's, it's ready to be approved by council if you so wish. And Kevin or I can take any questions.
Any questions? I will say one thing, over there, you have Vernon Township, West Main, and the city all coming together, and because it's an older part of the whole region in that area, it'd be good if you could just take an eraser and just start drawing new lines, but that's not practical, so. We did a lot of work, legwork in that area. We asked that Smuckers donate this to the conservancy because we have other parcels in that area, and we have already gotten approval to remove the low-head dam that's in that area as well, which will help the habitat for a lot of the fish and mussels that are in Cusawaga Creek that have been, their habitat has been hindered from moving to the upstream side of that, and so that's scheduled to be taken out. We've been fortunate to acquire almost all of the land south of Spring Street between French Creek and Cusawaga Creek. There's a couple parcels that I'm ready to close on in there that we've been digging around and figuring out that we knew who owned them, but it wasn't known that they were, the people didn't know they owned it because of the realignment that took place in Spring Street, so. There's only a couple of parcels, residential parcels, that are along Spring Street that we don't own, so that will be all open for passive recreational use. And remember too, that we also own the old rail line, it goes from the bridge all the way to the Vernon Township, Ballfield area, Apptex area as well. We'd like to eventually see that used as a trail, maybe an extension of the Earnest Trail or whatever, so. We've been very busy in that area trying to protect the Cusawaga Creek as well, there's a couple parcels that we don't have in there, and again, that's open for passive recreational use. One thing that we found in, in that area, and it's no secret that we've had issues with squatters, indigenous people taking advantage of that area, we have also taken a lot of trash out of that area in our annual cleanup. You know, we, we go all throughout the watershed on our cleanup, but every year, it seems like we get over 40,000 pounds of trash and a dumpster also full of tires, and there's a lot of tires in that area as well. Hopefully, it becomes something that we can manage and it will create a green space for people that want to be able to use that area, and it is important, it's on the migratory flyway for endangered, threatened bird species that migrate through, and it's, it's pretty, we deem that as a very important area, so we've put a lot of work and effort into that as well as the rest of the watershed.
Okay. Gary, just to recap, a couple things, you indicated, and you indicated this, this has already gone through the planning commission, your planning commission of the city, it's already gone through the county, your city engineer is already certified that it's in compliance with all the requirements, through the planning commission. Under the law, when it comes to you, your role here is really, it's a final stamp of approval, and really, you're required to approve it unless there was something specific that we could point to, right, under the code of something was wrong, right?
Right.
We wouldn't approve that. So just, so you understand, your role, this has already gone through all the regulatory steps, really.
So, I'm just going to do this, get a motion to approve subdivision?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Right? Gary made it clear.
Right, right.
Any, any discussion? Vocal. McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vocal?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Thank you. Right, yeah. Resolution, authorized signatures, grant writing and project manager support consultant contract, city of Needville and Spark Community Capital LLC.
A resolution of the council of the city of Needville authorizing signatures on the grant writing and project management support consultant contract between the city of Needville and Spark Community Capital LLC. Resolved by the council of the city of Needville, but the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially, and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for abiding an effective agreement, the city of Needville and accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement, and the man are required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion to authorize? So move. Second. Discussion? So, this is...
Portal, Mary Ann?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Portal to portal, so when he leaves his house, he's on the clock?
Anytime that he's just working on the grants itself, so the travel time is not concluded in that.
Sorry, you were interrupted, were you going to say something?
So, this is a contract, as you know, Debbie Corral, who has been doing the grants for the city very successfully over the last couple of years, will be retiring at the end of this week in order to help fill the gap in what she has been doing. We reached out to Jason Rogirio, who is a, who visits his organization, the Spark Community Capital LLC. His hourly rate is $75 per hour, and also, he also has another individual to assist him, because he is getting some additional consulting work, nothing of which should deter from his responsibilities to the city. So this is an interim step until we can find a permanent grant administrator.
Jim, to your question, I am looking now, I see the words portal to portal in here.
No.
The project manager, grant writer, that's just the rates of those two different offerings, not the two different people, or...
That's the rate of the, the two different offerings.
So, with working as the project manager versus...
I saw that Steve's rate is effective throughout the year, is there a thought on like timeline of how long we intend to use Jason's services?
It depends on our success rate of finding a replacement, permanent replacement. We will start to advertise that, but there are some big projects coming up, the Heidi Cooper DCNR grant, some additional monitoring and reporting that we really need to get through at this point, but we will, and will be based upon when we can find a replacement.
So this is just contracting added capacity that'll be needed until...
Correct.
...a person. And I know you guys just discussed, so we're hiring one, a grant, a grant writer or, or both, a grant writer and a, and he'll be paid according to what he's doing, or...
It's, it's the same rate.
Right.
So it's, grant writing is actual writing of the grant, the project manager is more of the monitoring and reporting aspect of a grant.
And Debbie did both of those?
That's correct.
You can also terminate this at your convenience on 30 days' notice, so...
So there's not like a year contract?
If you're unhappy, if there's not an ongoing commitment, if you decide you don't want to spend the money on that moving forward, or other reasons, or fill the position internally that we terminate them.
Does anybody else have any questions? I don't know that it's... Go ahead. Belongs in this conversation, will we acknowledge Debbie on her retirement?
Yes.
Okay. Vocal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vocal?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution, authorized signature, summer parks program agreement, city of Needville and Needville YMCA and Creating Landscapes.
A resolution of the council of the city of Needville authorizing signatures on the summer parks program agreement between the city of Needville, Needville YMCA, and Creating Landscapes. Resolved by the council of the city of Needville, that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially, and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for abiding an effective agreement of the city of Needville and accord with this terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement, and the man are required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion to authorize signatures?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
So as the resolution says, this is an agreement between the city, the YMCA, and Creating Landscapes for a summer park program. The hours of the program are 10:00 AM until 3:30 PM throughout the summer, and we will be requiring all of the insurances and background checks for both of these parties.
It's just up to us to terminate, and we can 24, I think it's 24-hour minimum to deal?
Yes.
Is that standard? Like, where does that come from?
It's very, it's strict in favor of the city, in case there was an issue with the programs that the city didn't like, that you could shut them down. The last version of this that we did a couple years ago was 72 hours, and I thought, the reason I changed it is, you have a range of, can terminate immediately, a few years ago, 72 hours, some agreements that we just passed are 30 days, with a program involving kids on city property, I said, okay, if we went 72 hours last time, why not just make it 24? It's the same intent, if there was a big problem, you'd want to control the program. I wouldn't anticipate there being any, but if, if for some reason you were unhappy, I would think that the city management would want to take apart or shut down the program. That's fine.
I see you have a hold harmless agreement in there. If I understand this agreement correctly, the other parties are responsible for making sure that all clearances are maintained and current?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You named the use of the park and the shed, does that include the, like, pavilion and restrooms, right, like...
So, the shed, I was, the shed was in the last agreement, so I wasn't sure if that was, I included it, I didn't know if they needed it here.
Did you say what's...
I'm assuming it's on the, on the outside of the pavilion, there's, there's like a door on the outside that...
They were keeping supplies in it last time they ran the program?
So like, does use of the park include use of those park facilities, like the pavilion?
I, I believe so, I shouldn't tell me differently.
I think that's good. I just didn't know if they couldn't use that, and I was trying to picture what the shed was, and I...
It will just limit other public people from using it?
Oh, so, okay, that's good to note too, so this is like exclusive, exclusive, in terms of like, other people booking the park for a private...
During those hours, yeah. Got you. So, so if I wanted to have a pick ticket, would have to be after 3:00 any, any weekday?
Correct. As long as the program is going on, yeah.
Right. Does anybody else have any questions? Does the agreement start, like, does it lay out the timeframe?
I left blanks because I wasn't sure when the...
It'll start, do you remember?
Creating landscapes had approved, the prior version of this, which was very similar a few years ago, the Y has, I don't know if the Y has seen the shed, I did not circulate it to them. So, provided they don't have substantial changes, you're approving this in form, subject to our final approval, if they, if they wanted substantial changes, then it would come back.
Did we, did they present, I don't have my material on either last time, did they present a proposed, like, period of time to do this, like, start kickoff in?
I believe they just presented the times themselves.
Not like the seasons?
Correct.
And the use, and I think it was pretty vague, because then we said, sure, let's, you know, we, we support, and then that was it.
And, and in the past too, it's up, it's up to council, we've done this two different ways, we can approve it, subject to our final approval, and we'll fill in that, that blank, or if you prefer, we'll circulate it to the Y, get any feedback from their attorney, and we'll come with a final draft. I just wanted to move it ahead, just in case they needed to get this approved and get the program getting ready, but we can wait until the next meeting to do a final approval and fill in these blanks, if they know, start date, finish date, et cetera. It's up to you.
Yeah, I ask it more of a cur, just to know when the program runs?
Sure.
But I don't necessarily know that that has any bearing on like...
Right.
My decision, like...
Right, and it's, it's, that's totally up to council, sometimes council wants other parties to approve documents first, and then we're the final... final sign off, and that's fine, if you prefer not to approve it with some blanks.
Right, well, because they'll look at this, and if they come back with something else, that they'd like on it anyway, right?
Right.
Like, so it's, it still would need to be per our final approval.
Correct.
Right.
Gary, are there limits stated anywhere for liability insurance, I do this notice?
I did not include that. We have standard guidelines, Gary.
Million.
Is it one million, two million? One million per ounce, two aggregate?
Yes.
So, we would require the same that we require for permities, et cetera, license holders. We would get that certificate prior to them coming on site? Yeah, and you will sign this last. So, Mayor, if, if council approves this tonight, I will go back to them, assume there's no substantial changes, they'll sign it, and then you sign.
Okay, and if there are substantial changes, we'll just bring it back?
Correct.
Discuss again?
Next meeting, we'll say, hey, they wanted some changes, are you okay with it or not? But you get the final say.
I'm in favor of the agreement.
Yeah.
Are you moving?
Second.
I think, sorry, move. Yeah, it was moved, so we've got, uh, the motion and the second with Larry, I think we've discussed, but is there any more discussions needed? Vogel?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution, authorized signatures, audit contract for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, City of Meadville and Mattern, CPA LLC.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on our audit contract for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three between the City of Meadville and Mattern CPA LLC. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for abiding in effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion to authorize signature?
Sub move.
Second?
I second.
Discussion.
Clint Mattern has been doing the city's audits for a number of years now. This is just extending that contract to cover twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three.
And no money?
Uh, just professional liability insurance. So, council, this engagement letters are a little confusing to read. This is a hundred percent standard. Any accounting firm with their engagement letter would be almost identical, okay? And as far as letting out the standards, what their scope of professional services will include, I am gonna ask Clint to add one sentence, just to make it clear that you can terminate it, even though it's intended to be a three-year engagement, if for some reason the city needs to go in a different direction. That's just standard for a professional contract, but I'm gonna have him add that, and he'll be fine with it. I tried to reach in my phone before the meeting, I didn't catch him, but he'll be fine with that petition.
And that's in all of our professional contracts?
It's just, it's implied with a professional contract, but I'm just gonna have him include it.
Okay. Historically, has it always been a three-year engagement, three-year bid or...
Generally, when we've bid it out, we've asked for a three-year commitment, because if you did switch to a new accounting firm, they need a lot of time, the first year to get up to speed.
For sure.
So, we've always made it a three-year contract.
And you've been very happy with his...
Well, we've bid it out twice since, since I've been here, and each time he's been low. There's only really two firms in the City of Meadville that would be able to do this, and we're constantly in contact with them. So, should they ever desire to feel like they could give us a better quote, they certainly would.
Any more questions, Dave?
Vogel? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution, appointing liaison between the City of Meadville and Burkeheimer?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, authorizing, empowering and directing the proper officers of the City of Meadville to appoint a liaison between it and Burkeheimer, the duly appointed collector of local taxes for the district, for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Act Number Five-Eleven of nineteen-sixty-five General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and Acted December thirty-first, nineteen-sixty-five, and effective January first, nineteen-sixty-six, authorizes certain political subdivisions, including the City of Meadville, Crawford County, to provide for the creation of such bureaus or the appointment and compensation of such officers, clerks, collectors and other assistants and employees, as may be deemed necessary for the assessment and collection of taxes imposed under the authority of that act. And whereas the City of Meadville, Crawford County, has entered into contractual agreement with Burkeheimer of Bangor, Pennsylvania, whereby and whereunder, City of Meadville appointed Burkeheimer to collect certain local taxes. And whereas said Act Five-Eleven specifically mandates that any information gained by the appointed tax officer, his agents, or by any other official or agent of the taxing district, as a result of any declarations, returns, investigations, hearings or verifications required or authorized by the taxing municipality's ordinance or resolution, be kept confidential except for official purposes. And whereas any person who divulges any information which is confidential under the provisions of any ordinance or resolution, upon conviction may be subject to fines and/or imprisonment, upon conviction, and dismissal from office or discharge from employment. And whereas Burkeheimer requires passage of a resolution by the City Council of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, specifying that said confidential information is needed for official purposes and absolving Burkeheimer from any liability in connection with the release of said confidential information. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Meadville, Crawford County, hereby appoints the City of Meadville Finance Director, City of Meadville City Treasurer and City of Meadville Accountant as its authorized representatives to make requests upon and receive any and all tax information and records from Burkeheimer relative to the collection of taxes for the City of Meadville, as desired and deemed necessary by City of Meadville to be used for official purposes only. And Burkeheimer is hereby directed to provide and/or transmit any and all tax information and records or any portion thereof relating to the collection of taxes for the City of Meadville upon request to the City of Meadville Finance Director as the authorized contact representative for it. The City of Meadville, Crawford County hereby saves harmless, indemnifies and/or absolves Burkeheimer from and against any and all liability in connection with the release of said confidential information.
All right. Yeah, that was fantastic. Motion to appoint liaison? So, I guess we gotta figure out who the liaison is gonna be, huh?
It'll be the Finance Director, City Treasurer and Accountant.
Okay.
Question, before we do the motion, do we, pardon me, do we need to modify that as to position like interim, Meadville Finance Director or acting Meadville Finance Director? Or I want him to stay here for another hundred years?
By understanding that this is something that will be required annually from Burkeheimer?
Okay.
Or anytime there is a change in staffing?
Okay, all right.
Is that why this has come up now? I didn't... Okay. Okay, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Okay. Vogel?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Councilmember statements? Who's go first? Gretchen?
I guess my statement would be centered around when we met with the people from, with the theme project and that idea of our sister city. I was just very impressed with all the things that we think are problems, but looking at the pictures of the city that was bombed, and so appreciative that, that, you know, this, these people from this battalion of this little town in Pennsylvania came and like, they pretty much saved the town. It really, you know, it really put things in perspective, and I was thinking about Reverend Cam's message. It just, it hit really well about being compassionate and working together. Also, we went to, caught Gary Johnson's boot camp for city council people, just kidding. Gary was a presenter. It was really great, and I have to say that outside, I mean, I learned a ton of stuff and I met a lot of really cool people. And for, like, if people are watching who are downtown merchants, the people from Greenville were like, Meadville is such a cool city. You have so much going on downtown. I love the shops, and, I mean, I kinda got goosebumps because, you know, we're like, oh, gosh, how are we gonna do this? But I was like, gosh, we're not bombed, people love our city. It was just a very positive weekend, and, you know, into this, this part of the week. So, I'm going with that.
Sure. Um, Friday, first Friday, cookie walk in downtown Meadville, five to eight, start at the market house, get your box, and see our awesome downtown, and get all our free cookies. And I think there's like also other things going on, music and stuff, and so folks can check out and explore safely. A reminder that we have ongoing, several of us have ongoing city council office hours. I'm in the office across the way, we all are. I'm there Mondays eleven to one, I think, you're there Tuesday, Thursday?
Yep.
All day, mostly.
All day.
You're there Friday, twelve to two.
Yep.
Um, yeah, for, for me, I, I like to dedicate that time to like, get stuff done that I might not otherwise, dedicate that time to. But I'm also open, so folks should, should call or come in, especially if they've got something they wanna, on their hearts or minds about what's going on with the city. Love to talk to folks. Also, we've got some like weird weather stuff coming up, so wanna thank Public Works for all the work they've been doing and continue to do, and just wish them good luck and everyone else that's touching this weather situation. So, folks should stay safe and thanks in advance to all the folks that are gonna work hard to keep us safe and clear.
Jim?
Thank you. I have a lot of them. Absolutely, the Public Works people are doing a phenomenal job. I was out four o'clock in the morning, I knew they were working, in fact, the wire had come down in the neighborhood, so they were right on the ball. Speaking of winter, we do have a sidewalk shoveling ordinance, and just for public safety, please remove the ice and snow from your sidewalks. You don't want someone falling, getting injured. Your insurance, they're gonna go after. Also, if you have the health and the ability, could you shovel out around fire hydrants? The extra couple of minutes it takes a fireman at the scene to clear the ice and snow is the difference between whether a life is saved or lost. Now, on a personal note, I'd like to thank Debbie Corral for her wonderful work with the city. She helped us write and received about five and a half million dollars worth of grants. That is a phenomenal, phenomenal accomplishment. Best wishes to her and her retirement and her new venture. Also, to Frank Duda, who is retiring from the sewer authority. Congratulations, and many thanks for a job well done. And finally, I'd like to note the passing of a former employee, a receptionist, Eileen Slagel. Most, Tim is about the only one who's old enough to remember Eileen. She was here in the eighties and nineties. A woman of perpetual cheerfulness and politeness. She literally sang and filled the halls of City Hall with music down at the old city building. So, she was a wonderful public face for the city. She just passed away last week. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to reiterate a couple things that, that have been said here. Autumn said that we have our hours, we are elected officials, use us, make appointments with us, our emails are there if there's something that you need to discuss. We are here for that, that, that's what we're here to do. And as Gretchen was saying, basically, I'm gonna summarize as count your blessings. We live in a great city, and just, you know, as the weather is impending and, and everybody is doing the best that they can, try to be patient, again, with our, our Public Works Department and our streets. But also, don't forget about your neighbor. There may be somebody that, that needs you, that may need looked in on, that may need a meal, that may need help walking down the street, and my son just helped a lady, he jumped out of the car to help a lady who said she was handicapped, and he walked her two blocks in his shorts after wrestling, carried her bags, you know, and it, it, it didn't seem like much, but it was very sweet. You know, I didn't take a picture and put it on Facebook, because that's not, you know, that's not what you do when you help someone, you, you let the deed be, be the kindness, right? And just, especially with the weather impending, remember that, that our, our city is full of our neighbors and our friends, and again, everyone is, that is trying to do their best. So, please be kind and think of them when you have a little bit of time. And with that, I'm gonna have a motion to adjourn.
To executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Vogel?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rea?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.